Okay, good evening everyone and welcome to our April 16th, 2024. Milani Malka, Launani Valley Neighborhood Board 35, a regular board meeting. I call this meeting to order and at this time ask Scout DSA Troop 664 to lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance.
Please rise for the presentation of the colors. Troop attention. Color guard attention. Color guard four, march. Mark time, march. Left wheel, march. Ready, halt. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Scout salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two. Color guard four, march. Mark time, march. Ready, halt. Color guard dismissed. You may now be seated.
Thank you Scout Troop 664. Okay, moving on to meeting decorum this evening, Vice Chair Thomas Sherrill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everyone. On behalf of Chair Hosama and your members of your Milani Malka and Launani Neighborhood Board. Again, we welcome all your feedback, concerns, issues. We just asked for the meeting decorum that you raise your hand, please, then be recognized by the chair and then when motioned to do so, come up to the microphone. For those that are joining us virtually, again, if, again, you could use the hand signal if you want to be recognized by the chair. But when you're not, we ask that you mute your speakers. And then the last is that if you please, so we can get everybody's feedback, to try as best as you can, the limited to about three minutes. Thank you very much. Back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Moving on to our monthly reports. Honolulu Fire Department.
All right, good evening, everybody. My name's Tony. I'm a firefighter with the Honolulu Fire Department stationed at Milani Malka. I have the stats for the month of March. So as far as fires go, we have, we have one structure fire, one nuance fire, which includes rubbish fires outside a structure or vehicle. We had four active air alarms. As far as emergency goes, we had forty-five medical emergencies, three motor vehicle collisions. As far as the safety tip announcements, have emergency, prepare this plan ready in case of environmental emergencies, fire disasters, natural disasters. Those two, two ways out of your home, consider the route you will take in need of evacuation from the neighborhood due to to an emergency. You can visit the fire, visit fire.honolulu.gov to learn more. Also, some added tips is leave early enough to avoid being caught in any fires, smoke, fire, road congestion. Establish a predetermined location such as a well-prepared neighborhood, a relative's house, a low-risk area, or a shelter or evacuation center. Take your emergency supply kit containing your family and pets' necessary items. If you have any questions, please email HFD's Community Relations Office at capital HFD, NHB, at honolulu.gov. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the Honolulu Fire Department?
Anyone online?
I had one question. I know the Fire Department did participate in the first responders, I guess, meeting out here last month in Milani. So, do you know when the Malka Wildfire Report is going to be completed and ready?
I think, actually, I don't have that information. We can get back to you with that, maybe hopefully next.
Either that or you can email me, because I know I get your reports before the meeting every month. So we just want a rough timeframe, you can expect that reporting.
Sounds good. Any other question?
No, thank you very much. Moving on to the Honolulu Police Department.
Good evening, Chair. Good evening, Board Members, and good evening, community members. My name is Tim Milma, and I am the Representative for Honolulu Police Department. So to start off for today's event, I just wanted to let you know the tip of the month, so I kind of want to go over reporting abandoned vehicles. So abandoned vehicles can be an eyesore for the community. The abandoned vehicles can also pick up premium parking depending where you live. So if you want to report a vehicle that is abandoned, I'm sorry, the definition of an abandoned vehicle is a vehicle parked in the same area for more than twenty-four hours. So if you want to report an abandoned vehicle, there's one, call Honolulu Police, call 911, non-emergencies, and give the details and have an officer go out. And what would happen is an officer will mark the vehicle and we will put it in our system notifying our abandoned vehicle section. Just come out and just follow up with this complaint. The second way, which is the recommended way I would recommend, is using the Honolulu 311 app. It is a city app. And all you got to do is take a picture of that vehicle, put down the details and the location, and that app is going to send that complaint to the right department. And usually, somebody from abandoned vehicles or wherever your complaint is going to, will address it within, I say, three days. So that is my abandoned vehicle tip for the month. And if you are curious about what's happening in your community, again, you can always go on honolulutv.org and look at our crime maps, crime mapping to see what's happening. Done that. Any question?
Thank you. Any questions for the Honolulu Police Department this evening? Next question.
I'm just curious if there's a protocol currently for HPP with regards to encampments that are being popping up in grassy areas that are either state or city-owned, along freeways, things of that nature. Is that something HPP, if they see it, they readily address it, or is that something that we would have to report and then has to go through a different cycle?
Oh, yes. So regarding the question addressing homeless encampments, whether it's on city property, state property, or federal property, you can always call 911 and meet with the officer, and they're going to assess the situation. So from there, they're going to see what jurisdiction it is, if it's private property or government property. And from there, if it is a government property with a city or state level, we can address it. And they'll probably talk to the, depending on the encampment, if it's a small encampment, they can probably handle it at their level and try to tell the guy, you can't be here, start packing and stuff. But if it's a bigger encampment, that's usually when it comes to us. As a community policing team, we try to, we understand that getting an encampment, clearing out, clearing out an encampment doesn't happen overnight. It does take time. So what we'll do is we'll coordinate with our department's facility maintenance, our SPO, sort ordinance program, team to come out and try to go in there, take, to remove a lot of the items. But before we do that, we try to work with our outreach groups, and we go out there and provide services for these individuals so that we don't just, you know, keep them out to a different community, even try to get them the needed services first. And we're giving them multiple warnings leading up to that cleanup.
The reason why I'm asking is my Kiki noticed there was a man that was living in his tent with his moped in the middle of H1, H2 merge in one of the... So coming down from H2 on the right-hand side, but when you're coming up from H1, it's then up on the hill. He literally is camping, well, he was, and so they saw it and they're like, can we do that? I'm like, it's dangerous, number one, because it's a freeway, but then it started the conversation. Of course, we had dealt with the Wahoaside, a woman and her children were living in a tent right off the freeway unwrap out of Wahoa. And so the little things like that, the kind of things like, it's just an individual who found a creative way to make use of green space. And so I noticed it happening even alongside freeways a lot, even via air. So I was just curious if that's something that is on radars.
Yeah, so regarding that freeway, so I think that's out of our district, but then, oh no, perfect, and hopefully the HPP, that goes out. But at our level, if it's our district, we'll not leave.
Thank you. Any other questions for the Honolulu Police Department? Anyone online? Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody this evening with border water supply?
I'm here, Dean. I'm on line.
Hi Kathleen, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, everybody. I just, just a reminder that we have, this month is Detect a Leak Week. So make sure that you're checking your toilets and your faucets to ensure that there are no leaks. A leaky, a runny toilet can really add up in terms of expense and money. There are no main breaks to report. I did want to thank the community for your help while we were dealing with the milky water issue a couple of weeks ago and for the conservation efforts. Our reservoirs are back to normal. We will be replacing pump unit number two at Milani Wells 4, and we expect that to happen in the next three months. The pump has been ordered. And then once it comes in, we will change it out. And that is my report.
Okay, thank you, Kathleen. Any questions for border water supply this evening?
Hey Kathleen, this is Theresa.
Hey, Therese.
So we, in Launani Valley, they're doing the the construction, the twelve-inch, I guess, water.
Correct.
Yeah, so they're really very responsive, and I just wanted to send a shout out to that team with, they're having to open up and cover and open up and cover the ground in that area. So I just wanted to pass it on to you that the team that is contracted, the supervisor is very responsive in taking care of a couple of issues that came up, including with the covering of the water area, the drainage area. So they have been keeping that, so I did want to point that out. But I know it was brought up last two meetings ago with regards to resurfacing that area, and I think part of it was City Councilmember's office, whether they're going to repave. And we were told no, but is that a part of the project where they're going to repave over those portions from the top where their well is all the way down the entire street, or they're just going to be covering the areas that they open?
We only recover to one foot of each side of the trench. That's what we repave, but it must match the current paving. And that actually is a city ordinance. It's going back to, I forget, the early 2000s, I believe. But yeah, we will repave the areas, but we're supposed to repave it so it matches the current state. So in other words, you shouldn't have any big bumps or anything like that, or even little bumps. And if you do, let me know. By the way, I just told them that you lived over there and they better behave themselves.
Thank you. Any other questions for border water supply? Anyone online? Okay, go ahead.
Kathleen, I think there might be a water leak, and it's been there before in my track. Who do I contact to? I don't know, because it's got water running. I mean, it's got water there all the time. So who do I contact to advise them?
You can call me. Let me give you my number. Eight oh eight seven four eight five three one nine. I just need the address, and then we'll take care of it for you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, Kathleen.
Aloha. Have a good evening.
Aloha. Okay, next is our Military Representative, Major.
Evening, Chair. Board Members. Major Tony Hummer, BTO, 414. Just a couple of things. So first, starting with the April Job Fair. So US Army Garrison Hawaii, we told them that's next, current fair on April 18th, so it's Thursday. Honolulu Airport Hotel, getting at eight thirty, tilted to the clock, and tilted to the public. There will be job offers, provisional hiring, we're getting a job fair, opportunities in both the business operation, child care services. If you're interested, you can go online to www.hiawar.com, click on the link. Moving on to the People Training Advisory, so the US Army Garrison published the People Training Advisory for May 3rd, April. If you have any questions you want to add to that classroom, you can call the line at eight oh eight seven eight seven fifteen twenty-eight. You can email at usheep.com. For April, so the Army is conducting a special barracks, a couple of highlights here. There will be artillery, mortar, fire, fire, special barracks, twenty-three, five April. There will be demolition training, five April, that's day and night. There will be small unit packages, fire, twenty-one, thirty April, in day and night. Divination training, eighteen, twenty-eight April. Then there will be mine clearing training, twenty-six, twenty-eight April, that's day and night. And just following up, turns from February 4th. So I can leave those concerns to the CG, the Army. Next week, they definitely have a chair. Final thing here is the Army will be doing a prescribed burn, a special barracks. So they're looking to conduct this grad burn, they can next to non-environmental conditions. So the grad burn is when lots of technicals are moved along tires. The other way. The Army received approval from the Hawaii Department of Health and Food Air Branch, it's related to US Fish, Wildlife Service, to ensure all states, federal, army regulations. While multiple personnel and assets, according to clearance, fire fighters, they need to be engineers, ancient safety officers, swat specialists, plus origins, disposal, snow, long distance. And the burns will only take place during daylight hours, and it will have armed and wild trained fire fighters on site. Again, if you have any concerns. And then the final thing, it's not moving here, introduction to and the commander, that will be replacing me, June, I can wear your voice. It's no stranger to be island, it's pretty, but it's more exciting, we are seeing over at that language, so keep me careful. Here's sir.
Any questions for the military this evening?
I should have two questions. I'll start with the easy one. Can you describe what it is and maybe what areas it's taking place, mine clearing? What is that?
Mine clearing, so that definitely takes place on the radar.
Okay, I think there was some concern from last month, I think, with the very loud explosion, and so we said six AM to eleven PM, that stuff, that really, really, my kids are aware of it. And then the second would be with regards to the the prescribed burning, the open fires that are done, and I understand why they're done. I heard you mention that you folks do utilize cultural resources and things of that nature. Is there public access to these reports? Where you folks, what kind of questions are being asked, what kind of information is being provided? Is there somewhere that the public can access to see what's being discussed or approved or not approved by outside resources? They're in our mountains, though, yeah, and they can get out of control, and then they can go outside the zone that it was prescribed for. So my concern is that there is public accessibility to when you folks are getting resources to say, yeah, this area's fine, we don't have any endangered snails, et cetera, et cetera. I'd like to know if the public has access to who's been giving you that information and what information they're giving you as a cultural resource. Yeah, that's kind of what I'm looking for.
Okay, any other questions for military this evening? Anyone online?
Major, I had one thing. Sorry. I got an email. I think it's the twenty-fifth commander himself, having some kind of community outreach forum. Somehow weekday in the morning, hold on, spoke. So my only comment, it's like at nine in the morning, so it might get better participation from the public, given it's like in the afternoon or something. It starts at nine. I think it's next week. Yeah, this is, I think he's holding. Hold you, it's like at nine, it starts at nine. It's, I don't know how many people. Okay, thank you, Major. It was a short time. We appreciate your service. That was a fast four-year. I was like, oh, wait a minute. It's kind of like three months.
Thank you. Go report to the Moving on to our meeting. Do we have any residents concerned this evening? Anyone online? Okay, moving on to our officials before, Officer Governor, our governor's reps at the end, she posted the report. Move with me? Yeah. Moving on to Congressman Chase. Do we have our representatives from his office? Okay, moving on to Officer Mayor Glenn Giardi, Harry. Harry, you there? Is anyone there, Harry? Yeah, I knew that you were saying, Harry. Yeah, Harry, I see we can get you. I'll go back to you. Move on to Councilmember District Eight, Councilmember Okimoda's office. Okay, all right, we'll move on to Councilmember District Two, Councilmember Wyers office.
Aloha, Chair, and members of the board, Kelly Anaya, Councilmember Matt Wyers office. Just a couple of things, just want to highlight the rodeo that Councilmember was being to participate in honoring last month's full council, as stated in the I'm not sure if it already happened, but the winners of the rodeo going to be national competition sometime this month. And then the handyman winner will be going to the national competition in Florida. Just a couple of budget updates. So Councilmember did put eighty-three thousand for a position for stream maintenance and watershed management. I don't really have too much of the job description, because that will be left up to the department discretion. And then likewise, one hundred and sixty thousand for community services and innovation, both for the Office of Economic revitalization. And both of these will be up for second meeting at tomorrow's council.
Thank you, Kelly. Any questions for Councilmember Wyers? Anyone online? Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you for having me.
Let me know if you ever come back. Harry, are you there?
Surprise, you're up. Quickly, let me move on, office. Have any technical difficulty?
Good evening, Jamie, Councilmember of his office. Wanted to start off by congratulating Milani Middle School Principal Vice Assistant Principal Jeff Forsberg. The council will be honoring him tomorrow morning at nine AM. He's one of Hawaii's Assistant Principals of the Year, so he represented the state on the national stage. Followed by the full council meeting tomorrow, and a bunch of stuff on the council agenda tomorrow. The Salary Commission, the Ocean Safety Department, the Operating Book, Decapulation Improvement Project, CIP bill, the Property Tax Rate Bill. So no increase for property taxes on the residential side this year. There's a proposed short-term vacation method, a tiered community tax class. And no changes to the pre-existing bed and breakfasts that exist. So there's over thirty, so there's five pending questions I'll spell on my report. Seven, six, eight, five, zero, eight, if anybody online or off key. So each other, office.
Okay, any questions for Councilmember Okimoda?
Okay, so I have one for you and the So do we have a date yet for DDC on our redating, our rolling dating? Projects.
The report from DDC says second quarter this year.
Yeah, we're already in second quarter this year.
As I mentioned in February, they are working on part, the system, the hard way, and I think so. I will follow up with them again.
Okay. Harry, bathroom. Hey, Senator Delacruz, do you have anybody off of his office?
Hi, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay, hi, my name is Alarangella, and I am communing on behalf of Senator Delacruz and District Seventeen. Right now, he wants to let you guys all know that the legislature, legislation is currently in conference for the final two weeks prior to Senedea. Senators' priorities include funding for the district, so House Bill 2404, which would provide tax relief for working families by adjusting tax brackets and increasing the standard deductions. The Senate Draft One of House Bill 2404 includes these provisions. He is also looking at providing increased funds for biosecurity and invasive species to address the coconut rhinoceros beetle and little fire ant outbreaks. House Bill 2619 includes over twenty million to address invasive species right now. Um, House Bill twenty-six nineteen includes over twenty million to address of invasive species right now. And finally, the Lee Workman College Value Added Center held its grand opening and will begin accepting participants for the fall semester. Thank you, guys. All, um, at this time, I, uh, I am unable to answer any questions, but I can go back um, to let him know and then, um, provide you guys my input afterwards.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Senator Delacruz? Anyone online? Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to Representative District Thirty-Eight. Representative Matsumoto, anybody online or an audience? Okay, moving on to District Forty-Six, I see Representative Russo on. Go ahead, Nick. Can I, did you unmute your site? We cannot do. Great.
Yep, I I do my best, um, be basically here, um, to be here, listen to you guys, but also answer any questions that I might not be able to answer. Uh, so, uh, thank you guys for allowing me the opportunity to speak. I'm super excited. Uh, so we're beginning conference, last two weeks of session, uh, kind of a race to the finish. Um, but in this last, these chaotic last two weeks, uh, we are really happy with the guidelines and measures that the House is doing to increase transparency, especially after last year with the budget. Um, so specifically, all conference committees were supposed to read out, uh, any amendments or agreements for the final draft of bills. And specifically with the budget, it goes line by line on everything that they're agreeing on and changes they're making. Uh, it's still pretty confusing and spoken in code, uh, but it is a lot more transparent and also, uh, they are doing it. I think a new thing this year where the agree and disagree sheets are posted online to the public, uh, to see. Um, we finished up our disaster preparedness, uh, mapping and coordinators for Wauhua, and we're now moving on to the Bonaventure Valley. Uh, so thank you, Teresa and Stephanie for already volunteering to be a part of, uh, our program to, or our initiative to organize at the neighborhood level. And then kind of building off of that disaster preparedness, uh, two wildfire reports were released recently. One by the AG and then another by Maui County. Uh, I'm going to specifically talk about the Maui County one. It's a super extensive, um, eighty-four page report and that goes into like the pauses, the timeline, uh, who was involved, uh, the response after the fire and then numerous recommendations on how various things were. Um, but that's all I have. I can do my best to answer any questions.
Any questions for Russo on the seat? You online? If you, that's why they don't answer them, obviously, and, um, can't speak. All right, thank you very much for your report. Appreciate it. Okay, moving on to District Thirty-Seven, Representative LaChica. I mean, Representative from her office is.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can. Oh, okay.
Hi, sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay, those are my dogs. You guys. Okay. Hi, guys. So I have it. My April newsletter is currently on. These are so loud. My April newsletter, um, is still being reviewed, so as soon as I have the link for that, I'll send it out. But I sent to, I just sent to Dylan and it's also on my rep trishla chica dot com website, my March newsletter. So we did a community issue survey for the district. Um, we got about like two hundred thirty like responses on my April newsletter will show you, um, how folks responded to different and have felt about, you know, about different issues, um, that we were watching at the legislature. And then, um, wanted to let you guys know, we did a March, um, big show aloha, uh, public sign waving event in partnership with the Honolulu Police Department, our community members and Millilani High School. Um, and then a lot of, um, some public, um, safety advocates. And so we had about thirty community members come out um, to greet morning commuters, um, from in the intersection of Meheula and Lani Kohana. And, um, so that went really well. And then on April thirtieth, uh, end of this month, I'm hosting a community talk story at the end of the month. So we're gonna be inviting Honolulu Police Department just to talk about youth safety issues. So one of them is e-bikes. Um, they're also gonna talk about, you know, some substance use issues, just things to watch out for online. Um, and how they're being, you know, distributed. And then we're also gonna invite Hawaiian Electric because of all the power outages we've been having. And also the, um, Queens Health System will be there. So they'll talk about the new acquisition of the Wauhua, uh, General Hospital and what that will mean for the community. So April thirtieth at Millilani Uka Elementary. Um, and as soon as my newsletter is good for, uh, has been approved by the House, I can send that link over and it'll have the, the details for that. So I will conclude my report and, um, please let me know if you have any questions.
Any questions for Representative LaChica? Do you, you online? Hey, I'm Trish, uh, Representative Matsumoto is not here with us this evening. Can you get Twitter and check if DOT has a timeline yet for the emergency access note from Malca?
Yeah, yeah, I can ask her.
Okay, and then if they can send a report on.
Yeah, okay, yeah. We also have, um, they just told, they told us that Kamehameha Highway, I mean, I know, Millilani Townside from uh, Kwahelani, so the shopping center up to Lani Kohana will be going through beginning, end of this year. Some safety improvements, so they're replacing all the traffic lights. And not quite red light cameras, we're not there yet. I think the earliest they'll be implementing those is January. Um, but they're, they're gonna make sure they're gonna get community input on those. And then, um, but they're gonna put sidewalks on both from Meheula to Lani Kohana. And then they're also gonna put in a new crosswalk along Kwahelani. That's also something new that they're doing for Chemi, but I'll, I'll check with Lauren on the the, uh, Egress route.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Ellen. Uh, I was at the district meeting on Friday night with Lauren Matsumoto and she had a picture, whatever you call it, on, on screen and it showed them with a access road with the, 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 the access, secondary access out of, out of Miliwani, Malca. Was going through, um, the far part of the Millilani Park. Uh, park invite, I'm sorry, and would go down the hill and join into the Wauhua, the on-ramp going toward, uh, Wauhua. So there is something going on.
So here's the plan. We just wanna figure out. Okay, thanks, Trish.
Okay, no problem. Thank you, Chair.
Carrie, is Carrie ever she still?
Hi, Chair Hazama, can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, Carrie.
Oh, great. Oh, so sorry for all. It's but, um, good evening, Chair, good, good evening, board members and community members. Uh, Carrie Castle, Deputy Director, Budget and Fiscal Services, uh, representing Mayor Glenn Giardi. Wanted to share that, uh, the mayor has been conducting a number of town hall meetings across the, across the island. Been feeling like, uh, it was two hours well spent, um, so you're free to ask questions. Um, so, so far, there are, there have been four meetings, uh, that have been conducted. There's another seven to go, uh, up. The meetings are being, uh, live on O'Leal, so you can tune in that way as well. Um, that's all I have to report. Uh, I'm open for questions.
Thank you, Mary. Any questions for the mayor's office?
Aloha, I was, I noticed there was a flyer. Um, I went to the town hall, uh, meeting in Wauhua last week and it was, it was great. Um, but I seen the flyer that's here. I don't know if you know what flyer I'm talking, it just shows the list of uh, locations for all of it. And I noticed, and I'm, I know I'm being finicky about it, but I might as well say it. Um, I noticed that they did not spell Wauhua with a kahaku over the A, but all the other cities like Kaneohe and others do have the proper spellings, I think going forward with anything that's written, um, but just to include our little Wauhua. Um, with the proper spellings, um, since it looks like the place names of all locations and cities have been addressed. That's all.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. We'll pass it on to our communicator.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for the mayor's office? Anyone online? Okay, thank you, Carrie. Okay, moving on to moving on to approval of our board minutes for February twentieth, twenty twenty-four board meeting. Do you have any corrections or comments? One online? Any objections to adopting the minutes as for the being objection, being abstention, being abstention and board meeting minutes have been adopted by unanimous consent. Moving on to reports, taxi make central Oahu region. Okay, moving on to education, uh, Stephen Melendez, you have a report for us?
Uh, yes, I have a report. Bandwidth is kind of sketchy, but I am going to share a screen. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Sorry, a bit slow response time. Okay, this is a report for, I'm doing the, the education share report for Millani Middle School. Millani Middle School is doing well. I want to do a shout out to Assistant Principal Jeff Forsman for his, uh, congratulations at his achievements there at the middle school and he is being recognized tomorrow by the city council. Uh, the school's doing very well as they wrap up the school year. Want to remind the community that the school community meetings were open to the public on the second Tuesday of the month uh, at six o'clock at the mission comp. The PTS meeting is at five and the SEC meeting is at six o'clock. And what I've inserted here is part of a new, uh, publication school has called the Blazer Bugle on the left-hand side. And I believe that now I did email this to the board, uh, board members and also to the, uh, to Dylan. So Dylan will post this also up on the, uh, NCL website. The yearbooks, yearbooks is still available for purchase, uh, for the schools. So take a look at that. Just go to the, uh, administration office. And then, uh, really good input here. What is the goal for the first quarter? Uh, some of the textures kind of small, but the students here do mention their goals for the quarters. And then they have a new insert here called what is your most used emoji from the faces? I have a, a, um, it's, it's hard to see it. It's kind of small. But anyway, um, this information is available to you, uh, the faces, there's a, there's a fire here, there's a bow. And then the share with you is just the, uh, the closeout for the year that on, uh, April twenty-second is mid-quarter for the fourth and then they're going into for May Memorial Day, the twenty-seventh. Last day for the students is May thirty, last Tuesday, this thirty-first.
Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you very much. Is there any questions on this?
One online? Nope. Okay, so the other part of our education report, Adam.
Hi, this is Anna Hudson and I just wanted to, um, just get, take this opportunity to share my report. Um, I was asked by Steve Melendez to, um, cover two middle, um, elementary schools in the Malca area, which is Millilani Ike and Millilani Malca.
Please.
And I, and I'm happy to report that Ike Amanchi has announced that their school is in Memorial Lake Collection Site. Anyone visiting, wishing to donate fresh flowers, flower lake can drop off at the school on the morning of May twenty-fourth. And I'll probably add that to my next report. And as far as Millilani Malca, I was invited to host the fam, um, they posted their family fun day in early April. And the principal Shimabukuro, uh, invited me to attend the school's community council meeting on Tuesday seventh, May seventh, uh, from five to six. Um, I had the opportunity to look through Wheeler Middle School and Lahua High School, Lahua High School, um, under the direction of Chair Hazama. And I noticed on their website, they have a transitional center where military dependents can learn about their schools, take math placement tests and reading assessments. And they also have the opportunity to look at their school handbook. That was a great idea for military dependents. And then at Lahua, they, um, uh, they have some great events, but I was, I'm happy to share their Purple Day up where students who are children of active servicemen from all branches of the military service, um, all the different ones are recognized, will be recognized on Thursday, April eighteenth. And they're asking students to wear purple to show their support of military children. And last, um, I did notice in the DOE website, there's a resource for families in unstable housing. And so kids that are possibly living in, um, cars or just in areas that, um, is basically for the homeless can, um, get support. And I wanted to recognize, um, the Kelo, uh, West, K, uh, Low, uh, West Oahu is now servicing Region Three and Five. And they service all the way from Aia to North Shore. And they are also, um, servicing obviously in Region Five, uh, Wauhua and Millilani. So the contact information, um, I'm gonna put on, um, a vacant available to people, but, um, I think, I thought they weren't here today. Yes, they are here today if, um, they wanna, um, give a report too. So anyways, thank you so much. That concludes mine. Do you wanna come and share information? Uh, the contact person that, um, I, um, is Tanya. So I don't know, can you, if you could address yourself, that'd be great.
Hello, my name is Mandy, um. I am the Facility Director for Emergency and Transitional Housing. Um, I also support our outreach in Region Three and Five. This is Evelyn and Tia. So their main purpose and their goal is to connect unsheltered individuals, um, in beach parks, parks and undeveloped areas. in beach parks, parks, and undeveloped areas, and work on their barriers and get them stable and hopefully sustain housing income and any other needs that they might need.
No, thank you for coming tonight. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I can give a contact number. So if anyone um, has an encampment that they would like outreach to um, reach out to or service, um, they can call the eight oh eight seven four five seven eight eight zero, uh, and they'll pass around their parts too. So our outreach um, carries mobile um, phones.
Alright, thank you. Okay, I see Representative Matsumoto is here now. Also busy time at the bed, so.
Thank you Chair for letting me come up and report. You guys went very quickly today. Um, I apologize. It is a busy time. We're at, in the middle of conference. Uh, I'm sure some of the other reps shared about that, and so things are, I call it, it's almost like um, that really big finals at the end of the semester. That's where we're at in the session. And so heading into there, I do still have our mid-session survey. That's gonna be open till the end of April. So if you live in District Thirty-eight, and even if you don't live in District Thirty-eight, you can fill out our survey. Uh, you can, you received it in the mail if you live in my district, but you can do it online at repmatsumoto.com or scan the QR code that we have in the front. And then I just wanted to highlight a few of the measures that we still have moving uh, through the legislature. So I have HB two seven nine zero. This is the bill that reactivates the Hula May program. So if you're not familiar with the Hula May program, it was a first-time home buyer. You got locked into a really low percentage rate. Um, you got to go to classes to learn about home buying, and you had to live in your home for ten years. Um, really passionate about this program. It's actually how my husband and I were able to buy our house um, in twenty thirteen, and that's the last year that they actually had the program. Um, so really hopeful for this bill to move through because we, as we've all heard, housing is one of the number one issues. Uh, we also have four of our resolutions passed through the House. Um, so it's urging the city and county to establish a satellite city hall in uh, Mililani. And then also for the Mililani Mauna Emergency Access Road, requesting DOT um, to develop that road, and we'll go into that a little bit later in my report. Um, the next one is relating to native plant seeding project, and it's to encourage DLNR to uh, put native plant seedlings to restore damage caused by the Mililani Mauna wildfire. This one was done by a Mililani Mauna fifth grade student. Uh, she wrote me a letter. We were able to, from there, draft a resolution. She did a wonderful job testifying at the Capitol, and that bill passed to the House. And so I wanted to highlight that she did a wonderful job. And then also a resolution relating to um, electric bikes and dirt bikes, just to have a lot more clarity in regards to that. So those are the measures that are still moving and or have passed through the House when it comes to the resolutions. I did want to highlight on the next page, our Capitol Talkin' Tour. Um, as you can see from the photo, we had a, almost uh, ninety people show up to our Talkin' Tour, and so that was wonderful. A lot of children who came out because it was during um, spring break. Um, I did wanna highlight, if nobody's done that yet, just acknowledging Assistant Principal Jeff Horstman. I know you've probably done that, but got to go to his ceremony. Oh, such an amazing job to have the Assistant Principal, and he went up to DC um, as one of the top three candidates in the nation. I also wanted to thank, just on Friday, we had our legislative update town hall. Um, for everybody who attended that town hall, uh, it was a wonderful time for discussion. But now I'm gonna just have you, there's other resources, but I'm gonna have you flip to the last page where we have the emergency exit route update. Um, again, this is what was covered during our emergency um, and disaster preparedness town hall that we had here um, just a few weeks ago. And so this is what DOT presented. So hopefully you can see from the picture. Um, what was presented at the town hall is originally when we had discussed this, the emergency road was going to go through the park on the other side of the baseball field closest to the homes. Um, and they had changed that plan, and it's gonna go through the dog park to then connect with the freeway. Um, the reasoning given by Director Ed Sniffin is there, if you were to go through the park, there would have to be an easement with the Department of Parks and Rec versus the area with the dog park is already owned by DTS with the city, and they have agreed already with DOT um, that this plan can go forward. So the latest update we just got yesterday um, from Director Sniffin is the plan should be finalized by the end of the month. And the project should be done by the end of the year, is what he told us. Um, so I will keep you updated as we go through. Um, but if you do have any questions um, for Director Sniffin, you can either ask me now or feel free to email my, or call my office, and our contact information is on here. And if you'd like any um, water supply update, if you haven't gotten that already, because I know the water issue was a big thing here in Mauna for the last few weeks, that is my report.
Thank you, Lauren. Any questions for Rep Matsumoto's office? Go ahead.
Hello.
Hi, um, my first would be a comment. Um, I did see about the native plants and that, and that going through, which is amazing. I would just like to preface that to say, please work with someone culturally from, with, who can give you pers- perspective on what should go in that area. Not all native plants should go where we think they should, and some are not from those areas and should not be planted. So going forward, since it passed through, I would just recommend that. Um, but the, the uh, emergency roadway, so there's an open lot that's adjacent to the parking ride that sits empty and usually overgrown, and somebody goes in there. Is the city looking at picking that or buying that? Because right now it's owned privately.
That I don't know. Uh, you said no. I see Chair Hazama shaking his head no. Um, but I can check.
I'm just wondering if uh, DOT should be looking at, I mean, DTS and DOT looking at that because that has become an issue, especially during COVID, that it was so overgrown, it became a fire hazard. Um, because it's not owned by the shopping center, it's not owned by um, pestling book, and it's not owned by the city or the state is pregnant. So that might just be something to put on the.
Thank you. I'll ask Director Sniff. And I know he was trying to get the quickest way to get it built. Um, and he also said he hopes this is not the only um, emergency exit, but I will make sure to ask him when I talk with him.
Yeah, this is that. You have to put the entrance to the distance of lift up, what's already there. That's why we need to get the proper. Through the dog park, you see the road up in the straight alley. Right, you just have to.
It's a distance.
Only question is, they're gonna skirt the side of the, of the, not gonna.
I will double check with Director Sniffen. I'm pretty sure they're not going to, but you know what? Never assume anything. I will double check with Director Sniffen.
Yeah, because there's a, I mean, the dog, dog park, it's, it's perimeter, so. It's really dark part, maybe have problems.
To split it in half. Yeah. I will double track with Director Sniffen and report back. Are you guys, are you in session next? You are, you're not in recess next month, are you?
No.
Okay, I'll check the Director Sniffen and, and get a report.
Thank you, Lauren.
Okay, thank you. I apologize again for being late.
Okay, moving on. Military and Civil Defense.
Uh, no report.
Center Creation.
No report.
Planning, permitting, and zoning.
No report.
Transportation, I don't have any recognition and service awards. Does anybody have any announcements this evening? Online? Alright, seeing that our next board meeting will be held here Tuesday, May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four at seven PM and via WebEx. Thank you, everyone, this evening. This meeting is adjourned.